The time is 6:00 PM and the regular meeting of the Denison City Council is now in session. Our invocation this evening will be given by Vicki Gaskin of the Rise to the Times Ministries.
Thank you. Before I pray, I've been told by the Ministerial Alliance members to invite everybody that's here to come. 9:19:21, I'm sure everybody's seeing those signs, but basically it's a back-to-church event, fun for the family. There's all kinds of neat things. From 4:30 to 6:00 is fun, inflatable as food, 6:00 to 7:00 is worship, and I believe our own Denison High School coach is going to be our speaker. So, I was told and I'll be in a lot of trouble if I don't do that.
Well, we thank you for that public service announcement.
You're welcome. Okay, let us pray. Oh, Father, we just, we want to come to you tonight and say thank you. There's so much to do here. There's so much busyness in our world these days, but we want to stop and just say thank you for your provision, for your care, for your sustenance, for your protection. Lord, we thank you for this community, for all that you do here, for what you have provided, and for the family that, it's a city, but it is a family, and we thank you for that. Lord, I pray tonight for our community that is hurting, for those that are sick, for those that have lost loved ones, for those that are concerned and in fear. We ask for your hedge of protection. We ask for you to come and meet the needs that they have in this moment. And tonight, as we meet, Lord, as the city council and all the workers come together, this is a big meeting. There's a lot of things going on. Lord, we want your wisdom. We need your direction. And I pray not just for those that are here in this meeting, but for every single employee, the first responders, our police, the firefighters, those in the hospital and medical care. Lord, we want to lift all of them up in this special season and just ask for you to minister in comfort each and every one of them. Lead them and guide them, give them wisdom. And tonight, Lord, we, I just want to say thank you, and I know I've said that, but I don't think we can thank you enough. You're such a good, good God. Lord, I just ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Well, we are honored tonight to have with us Buzz, who is the Denison High School Yellow Jacket mascot, AKA Shelby Russell. Shelby is maybe the youngest mascot that we have ever had at the ISD. She is a freshman. She, her path forward is to become a vet. She intends to attend Texas A&amp;M, "Go Aggies." She, she is a member of Park Avenue Church of Christ, which we are very proud to say that she is, and her parents are Andy Russell and Bobby Hender. So, she is going to lead us tonight in the Pledge of Allegiance. Anytime you're ready, Buzz.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you so much. Come back and see us again when you can stay longer. Prior to going to public comments tonight, at the recommendation of our city attorney, we will remove 3J from the consent agenda and address it as an individual item. Julie, you want to let us know why you thought we should do that?
Yes, I recommend removing item five just to help ensure that all people who wish to speak have the same treatment and that there's not the discretionary ability to show favoritism or limit certain folks. So, when you get to that, I would recommend your motion to approve be subject to removing number five.
At this point in our meeting, we set aside time so that citizens may speak on any action item that is listed on the agenda. In order to speak, you must fill out a request to speak card, and we have one more, and it must be completed prior to reaching this point in our agenda. We have a number of you who wish to speak tonight, so we'll just, comments are limited to three minutes per citizen. You must address only the item that is listed on the agenda that you have identified that you want to speak about, and there will be no dialogue between the council or staff and the citizen. So, the first person wishing to speak, and please excuse me if I get your name wrong, but I'm trying to make sure that I read it as it's here on the card. Barbara Bogan. All right. Would you come forward and state your name and residence for the record, please?
My name is Barbara Bogan. I'm really here to observe.
And your address for the record, please?
My address is 1303 West Walker Street. And I just really came to observe on this. And when I saw that she just stated they were removing the 3J, having the right to speak on different things, and from what I read, yeah, we're going to remove that.
Well, we're removing 3J for individual consideration. We're not removing the item. We're removing it for individual consideration.
But we will be able to speak on different items.
Oh, you are speaking now, yes.
So, you're not opposing it? We're not opposing it where you can't speak on different things, right?
I'm sorry, Ms. Bogan, I can't hear you through the mask, so.
I'm sorry. So, from what I read on the other flyer that I received, you're trying to revoke the right to speak on different items that's going on in the city? Am I correct or am I wrong?
Julie, do you want to address that?
Yes. The current policy and the proposed new policy is that anybody who wishes to address the council about items of business that are before them for action on their agenda will be provided the opportunity to do so.
You will provide that?
Yes.
Okay. That was my concern that we weren't going to.
Ms. Bogan, in actuality, excuse, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. In actuality, the, what is on the agenda this evening is exactly the same policy that is, has been in place since March of 2020, and this simply moves it from a policy to a resolution. That is the only difference. There is absolutely no difference in the wording that has been in fact, in effect since March 2020 and what is on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
So, so no one is changing anything that affects a citizen's ability to address the council.
That's my question.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robert Kozinski. State your name and your residence for the record, please.
Robert Kozinski, 1123 West Walker Street, Denison, Texas, 75020.
Okay.
Okay. I'm opposed to 3J because I feel it's in violation of the state's Open Meeting Act for being able to speak freely on different topics at a public city meeting. And I feel this policy muzzles that open policy act to be able to speak freely on different topics at a public meeting.
Okay, is that all?
And I'm definitely opposed to it because we should be able to openly talk about different topics in the city without having to fill certain paperwork out to do that. And I feel like it's in violation of the state's Open Meeting Policy Act.
Well, I can assure you that we're not in violation of the open meetings, so is that also? All right, thank you. Mr. Thomas Vargas. State your name and residence for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Timothy Vargas. I live at 300 West Day Street, Denison, Texas, 75020. I also am opposed to 3J being restricted comments. I think, I agree with everything the two individuals just said before me.
Sir, I'm sorry, but we cannot hear you through the mask.
Let me speak louder because I'm not taking my mask off.
Okay.
I too oppose 3J. I think it's restricting public opinion, and as elected officials, I feel like that is what we elected you guys for, and I firmly oppose any kind of restricting comments on any city issue, and that's basically why I'm here. Okay, thank you.
Anja Osman. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Anja Osman, and I'm not required to give my address. We went through this last year.
Yes, I know we did. So, go ahead and state your objection.
I also oppose 3J. There should be no limit whatsoever for the public to have comments on stuff that affects them. It's taxation without representation otherwise, to not let them be able to talk about the items that actually affect them, much like the fire department issue last year. Even though everybody on the comment cards, I'm going to assume is going to be opposing this, you're going to end up approving it, aren't you? Yeah, yeah, I can tell. Okay. You should listen to your citizens and the concerns that they're bringing to you to tell you to oppose this, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Dallas Hayden. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sure. I'm Dallas, 1204 West Walker. Thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. I have a few issues. I believe in rules, and I really, I think it's important, decorum's important, but I believe number two, the decorum policy is too subjective. I think we should have a specific policy for decorum or no policy. The, number three, I believe that right now you can list an address, business or residential. Doesn't need to be residential address. My concern is this might single out business owners in the community who may have a prominent business in the area but live in the ETJ or something. And, you know, we don't want them to be considered, you know, potentially carpet baggers. That's the concern. Keep chilling. Please allow comments on all agenda items, number five. Some of the non-action items, this one might have been, 3J. We moved it to, I thank you for moving it to individual consideration. And then, the other thing I want to say is Plano Prosper, Alan McKinney seem to have more open comment policies. Some allow five-minute or unlimited comment periods. Others, they don't, none of them require a residential address, and just generally speaking, they're more, more open. So, I really appreciate all your time, but I would just, I think, recommend changing a few of these controversial kind of components, and I think you would have a great policy. So, anyway, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Item three, the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the removal of item 3J.
Say.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by Councilmember Doughty. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 3J, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution adopting rules for public comments at City of Denison Public Meetings.
Mayor, may I clarify something?
Yes.
I just want to be sure the council understands. When someone states their name and residence for the record, it doesn't matter whether they live in Denison or not. That does not affect their ability to have their time to speak. It's simply for the record. It's not for the purpose of limiting speech to only those folks who have a residential address in Denison. So, I just want to be sure that the council understands that before voting.
Mr. Smith, do you want to address why this was put on the agenda for tonight?
Yes, ma'am. This policy, as you stated earlier, was adopted by this council in March of 2020. All this is, is formulating from a policy to a resolution, so it's easily handled by all of our boards and commissions, not just the city council.
And Julie, Ms. Ford, do you want to specify why you want to strike item five?
Yes, Mayor. Item five allows, implies that perhaps there's discretion to allow topics not on the agenda to be discussed, and having that type of discretionary item could lead to not everyone being given equal treatment at speaking time, and so we want to be sure the rules are clear and not discretionary so that everybody is treated equally and the same.
Discussion from council. Questions for the city manager or our city attorney? A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution adopting rules for public comment at City of Denison Public Meetings, subject to removal of number five.
Say.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by Councilmember Doughty. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a request to change the zoning of one lot from the commercial district to the single-family five SF5 district located at 813 West Coffin Street, case number 2021-108Z. Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's referenced on the agenda. This is a request for a straight zoning from the commercial district to the SF5. We've seen that trend in the city. We are actually working on an area rezoning on the eastern port of town, but this is a single-lot rezoning. Here's the location, currently zoned commercial. You see there's single-family zoning immediately to the east. The applicant's requesting this change in zoning to accommodate a future residential structure. We have a recommendation for approval by the Planning Zoning Commission. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Mr. Webb. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to change the zoning of subject property from the commercial zoning district to the single-family five SF-5 zoning district.
Say.
There is a motion by Councilmember Doughty and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Hender. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 4B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a request to rezone approximately 3.748 acres along West Crawford Street from single-family 7.5 to planned development zoning district, case number 2021-117PD. Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This one will probably take a little bit more discussion in the fact that it's a planned development district. We were approached by the property owner to look at a residential development plan for this property on West Crawford. Here's the aerial showing the property immediately east of the railroad track on the north side of Crawford, an usually shaped piece of property. The desire was to develop as many single-family lots as possible in that. Current zoning is 7.5. The interest is to develop a range of lot sizes under 6,000 square feet to almost 10,000 square feet. Again, the property has existing zoning with a 7.5 zoning is the predominant zoning in the area. So, this is the layout. The applicant has submitted a preliminary plat for consideration. Staff is still working through the technicalities of it. Lot one actually is going to be an open space lot, so that very large lot in the southwest part of the development is actually going to be an open-spaced detention lot, so that will not be used for residential dwelling. Primary concern from staff from the very beginning, and the applicant is aware of this, and I know will want to speak on it, are those double-frontage lots 12 and 13 whereby you'll have a front yard face one cul-de-sac, and your backyard is adjacent to, let's say, the northern cul-de-sac. I've not seen how the houses are laid out, but in this instance, let's just say that the homes will front on the southern cul-de-sac. So, those in lots seven, eight, and nine on the northern cul-de-sac, they'll be looking in the back typically wood fences of those homeowners. I know this has been done in the past. We felt like this is really something we should move away from. So, from the very beginning, staff has not been supportive of that particular out, that particular design. However, the applicant wanted to move forward, take it to the Planning Zoning Commission, ultimately to the council. What we've decided and what we've recommended is there's going to be some additional landscaping and screening on the backs of those lots 12 and 13, have open fencing with landscaping of some type of evergreen shrub that would help offset and mitigate that appearance. In your packet, I know the applicant has provided some images of other lots in the city where the backyards of homes back into a street. A lot of those images, you'll see no fencing. Those look, you know, very nice. They're open lots. There are a couple images where people do face a fence, so I believe the applicant wanted to make the point that, you know, we've done in the past, you know, why can't we do it again? Again, I fully believe that you'll see, you know, the desire for the applicants, for the homeowners to have privacy fencing of some sort. So, you have a recommendation for approval by the Planning Zoning Commission. Their recommendation stated that they wanted to be able to, at the time, that we get the full landscape plans for those lots. I believe while it was not inferred exactly in the motion, that those landscape plans would be for both lots 12 and 13. As written in the PD, only lot 12 is covered. I'd recommend that we'd also include lot 13. If you approve the case that you amend, the P&amp;Z motion to also include lot 13 and additional landscaping and screening. Again, I'd be glad to answer more questions. We did ask the applicant because we are going below the 7.5 district if they would upgrade some of the development standards. So, just to kind of highlight on some of the things that we would be getting, that we would not get on a straight SF5, is that we would have a two-car garage for those sites, and that if the garage door faced the street, it would be a 25-foot setback versus an 18-foot setback, so the car could be wholly situated on the driveway, and the rear bumper would not back into the sidewalks. We felt that was a bonus. We are allowing for J-swing garages, so if you want to turn the garage sideways and have a J-swing lot, we give the ability to push that, that part of the building closer to the street. So, if you do a J-swing development where the garage is closer to the street, it'd be 15 feet, but again, the garage door would face the side of the property and not, and not the front. So, we felt like there was some good give and take between the applicant and giving us some higher development standards that normally be seen in the base zoning district. Again, glad to answer any questions. I do know the applicant's here and probably would like to speak as well.
Questions for Mr. Webb.
Yes, I have a couple. Was there some discussion with, when I saw this, I had a couple of issues. Was there some discussions on lot 13 to be some type of, maybe a neighborhood park as property there that maybe put a couple of swings on or something like that? Because to me, it's a really close-knit group, and I liked the way, the way it's set up. My other concern was that the lots across, I guess, two, three, four were only 50 feet wide. I guess, I'm thinking that's pretty narrow. Am I wrong in that thought?
That's the standard width of an SF5 district, so that was one of the reasons of going to the PD route to start with SF5 as your base zoning. So, that, that's the reason that that's part of a typical SF5 lot is a 50-foot wide lot. There was no discussion of 13 being more of a public or an amenity area. As I noted, lot one will be kind of the community open-space lot. We have not seen the civil plans. I don't know how much of that lot would I call usable open space because there will be some detention area for stormwater runoff, but without seeing the civil plans, I don't know how much of lot one would actually be usable to the neighborhood. But that was intent that that, that lot one, because that's where the drainage is going, would be that open-space lot for the neighborhood.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Webb? This is a public hearing, and the owner and developer, Mr. David Howerton, is here to speak. Would you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
David Howerton, 1640 West Woodard. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you very much for this time. I appreciate Mr. Webb's report. He gave a very fair report. I've owned this property for about 20 years, and so I've thought about it for a while, what might be the best use of it. As you can see, there's a railroad track right beside it. Just beyond the railroad track is a cell tower that I, it's not going to hit it if it ever falls, but it has fallen once before. And there's also a fallow piece of ground, most of 100 acres, that is bankrupted and is likely to never be developed. So, I'm very thankful for the PD zoning. As a matter of fact, in June, the council lowered the acreage from five acres to three acres, which is beneficial to this development. One thing that PD allows me to do is to have a very private flexible, gives me more flexibility, but it gives me a very private subdivision. I intend to leave as much foliage as I can around the edges and put in a privacy fence around probably two and a half sides to make it a very private neighborhood. That's my intention. And so, I've talked to several builders about lots 12 and 13 because staff has consistently brought that up to my attention. The ordinance says that double-frontage lots should be avoided, but it has a caveat for topography and for orientation. And what I would say to you is that when you have basically a square piece of property compared to something more linear, that's more or just bigger, that allows for a different layout, his first comment was this was an unusual-shaped piece of land. And so, I have laid it out. This is the most lots that I would have. As we move towards final plat, it could be less. I was encouraged by both P&amp;Z people that I've talked to and builders to consider the screening on lot 12, and that's what I offered as part of the development standards. But lot 13, there was a comment made at P&amp;Z that it's an end cap lot. It's not that much different from a corner lot. The house will face the south. The building line is to the south. And that's why I included the photos that I did for Park Village and for Coal Creek, which do have both houses without back fences, and they also have some that do have back fences. And, and they seem to be doing just fine. Park Village houses have been there for over 20 years. Coal Creek houses, I believe, have been there for over 10 years. So, I, that's the one thing that I didn't do, that staff asked. They encouraged me to upzone where I could, and so to go to double garages was a good suggestion on their part, and to keep the garages 25 feet. I don't know if that'll harm any of the builders, but to move the garages back so that the cars won't get into the sidewalk. So, I did all of that. So I did all of that. But I, my request in opposition to the staff's recommendation is that lot 13 not be required to have the screening.
So what's your, what's your opposition, Mr. Howerton, to, to screening that? I mean, I, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's going to be a fence. I would be really, really surprised if there's not a fence. People just do not build houses anymore without privacy fences. And, you know, my, I guess the proof will be in the pudding whether anybody will, will buy the lot across the street from it, because I wouldn't, I wouldn't want the front of my house to face the, the back of somebody else's house. I, I just wouldn't, that, you know, and I, I guess the ordinance says should be avoided, but I, I guess that it, it doesn't, I think to say that this is, is, is unusual, I'm looking for the right word, is unusual, and I understand that you're, that it is for the purpose of, of making, maximizing your acreage. I understand that. But I, I guess I don't understand the compromise not to screen a lot 13. So I guess I need you to, to make me understand that.
Well, as I, I said, as I've tried to market this property in the past, I've been told that the, the railroad was a real knock on this property. And so my decision was to embrace the railroad, and I've given it a Katy theme. And I intend to have elements, because it's a PD, in here maintained by the HOA, that will have a railroad theme. I'm sure you are all aware that we're about one year away from our sesquicentennial, and I hope to have these lots available before then. But for that specific lot, the builders that I've talked to have told me that their concern is only with lot 12 and not lot 13. And I think lot 13 has some flexibility and, and, and I, as I drive around and I look at Park Village and I look at Coal Creek and even Renaissance, there's other lots where that circumstance is there and people have not built fences, so I don't know that that's a guarantee. So that's, that's my best response.
Any council have questions for Mr. Howerton?
You know, I'm, I'm familiar with the cul-de-sac in Coal Creek. It, you know, it definitely is an odd setting, but at the same time, it's very nice. I'm sure the person that lives in that cul-de-sac enjoys the fact that they don't have any other house and it's almost private back there. So that would be the, I guess, the contra two, the concern. The, so I am familiar with that setting. You know, Mr. Howerton, have you looked at possibly, I know we could create a large lot, the possibility of maybe combining lots 12 and 13 and making them face iron porch?
Yes, sir, I've considered that.
I mean, that would, I mean, that would be, I realize that it would be a more expensive lot, development wise, but maybe that would make everyone feel more comfortable if you could have, you know, Wesley facing, I don't know. What were the, what were the drawbacks to that side of lot development costs?
Well, without focusing totally on lot 13, I think lot 12 is the fact that that is going to be screened and have some nice landscaping. It is an element that will break up the cold look of Coal Creek. And I, I do agree that that made that improvement. That's why I reached that compromise. There'll also be sidewalks all the way through the subdivision, which there are not in the two subdivisions that I've already mentioned. So I've, my personal opinion is that the screening provided for lot 12 meets the need of, for that cul-de-sac, for everybody in that cul-de-sac to, to have something different than just all fences. And that's just where I stand.
I do love the sidewalks. I think the railroad theme is, is really cool. My, my worry comes from kind of a different place in that, do, do we have any kind of right of way for Main Street if it was ever to become a through street or?
So Main Street is on the thoroughfare plan, however, the, and I should have put a copy thoroughfare plan. It envisions Main kind of swooping a little bit up to the northwest. What they'll need is it to hit that railroad at a true right angle. So as Main Street were to continue on, it would need to start curving a little bit more to the northwest so it'd hit that railroad at a right angle. So that, that's how that would lay out if, if it were to happen at that time.
So it wouldn't interfere?
Excuse me?
It wouldn't interfere?
No, not with this development.
Kind of follow Mr. Howerton's driveway there. No, I'm kidding.
Would you mind advancing to my triangle home set? It was in the, it was in the set that I saw on mine.
It may be in the staff report, I don't have it up here. Yeah, I just, I just have.
Well, whichever.
This site.
If you'll notice, there's a, quite a, a elevation difference if Main Street were to continue, plus the pavement for Main Street stops at Fairbanks. However, Woodard Street goes all the way to the bottom of the hill at the end of the 1600 block, and it's going to almost be at grade. Woodard Street is halfway between West Crawford and Morton Street. I would certainly encourage for the future development of any street to cross into the W. Smith property, Woodard Street would be cheaper to build and for two reasons. One, because of the elevation, and the other because it's paved for a whole other block.
Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? I requested that, that Mr. Shearer come to the meeting tonight since he is the chairman of the P&amp;Z for his input into this. Charlie, do you have, do you have any concerns that, that you do not think have been addressed?
I think we've debated this.
State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Charles Shearer, 915 Waterloo Lake. I think we debated this thing pretty thoroughly when it came before us, and actually initially, I think it tried to come before us as a straight zoning and we realized that wasn't possible. So with changes in our minimums for PD, then applicant came back with the PD. I think my main concern was not so much with, with lots 12 and 13 since it seemed that staff and them had come to an agreement on landscaping and screening. But my concern was, and I talked, I've talked this over with David as well, is that I felt like from a building perspective, from a design perspective, that some of the lots that were, for example, lot 10, if you could look at that lot, if you look at the dimension between lot 10 and 11, it reflects 85 feet, I believe is what that dimension was. Is that correct? Can you, I can't see it from here, so.
I can't read it.
The lot dimension, I think that's, I think that's what it was. If I'm, I'm going from rec, 80? Okay, thank you, David. Well, my concern was this, is we've got a 10-foot setback on the rear that's, that's mandatory per city, and I think the applicant has asked for a 20-foot setback on the front building line. So one would look, say, well, you got, you got it 80 feet, you subtract 30, you've got 50 feet to build in. If I had 50 feet, I wouldn't be so concerned. But the fact that that cul-de-sac cuts back into lot 10, it, it brings that down. So one of the suggestions that I made in, I mean, I've, I've made it to David, so I'll go ahead and repeat it, was that the possibility maybe of taking lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, pushing the street back a little bit towards the west to lessen the depth of those lots and bring everything back so that the lots that are over on the east side could be a little bit deeper. It would, I think it would just make, it would make it easier to build on those particular lots. That was merely a suggestion that I made. I think that P&amp;Z felt like that, that staff had, had worked with applicant since it had come back as a PD, and I think that the comfort zone had gotten to the point that they didn't have any real qualms with the development. I don't have any problems with the fact that it's an SF5 type zoning. I don't have a problem with the fact the lots are 50-foot. I mean, we live in a world where dirt's a commodity that doesn't reproduce itself, so we're going to have to think about density and, and, you know, smaller lots. I don't think that's anything new. I will say this, that knowing how David has planned on doing the subdivision, how nice the subdivision's going to be, that the cost of these lots will prohibit small houses from being built on them. So I think we're going to see some nice homes in this development. I don't have any doubt about that. Other than that, that was really the only things that, that I was, I mean, the depth of those lots was my main concern, and, and if the builders, and he's, David's talked to some builders, if they're comfortable with it and their architects and designers can make it work, then by all means, go for it. I just, you know, when I look at lots from a professional perspective, some of those things scare me because it becomes difficult, and then all of a sudden, the houses kind of become peculiar in their design and somewhat look out of place when you, when you finally get the final product. So other than that, any questions the council might have of the direction of P&amp;Z, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
Questions for Mr. Shearer? Okay.
Thank you.
Chris, did I close the public meeting?
You did not.
Okay. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? Yes, sir?
Is there any way?
Come forward and, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Robert Kuzinski, 1123 West Walker Street, Denton, Texas, 75020. And on the, on the new housing development, is there any way to take and make the garages bigger? Because a lot of the new homes, when you go to put two full-size pickup trucks in the garage, they don't fit because you've got a 16-foot garage door and a foot on each side. When you go to open the door, it bangs the wall and you can't get out of the thing without just leaving one car in a two-car garage. I was wondering if they can make it bigger to where you can put two full-size pickup trucks in a, in a two-car garage without opening the door and banging it, banging it in the, on the side of the wall. Because some of them are so tight, you, you can't, you can't open the door and get out. And that's my concern.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council.
So Mr. Howerton, on, will lot 12, will that house face south as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I think if 12 and 13 both face south, then at least if someone was coming along Crawford, you would see a home and not the back of a fence. And I think that's some consolation. I don't, I don't want to see the back of a fence either, but I do think that if we can make sure those are both facing south, and lot 12 will have that, so the screening on lot 12 will face the Gandy Dancer cul-de-sac. That's, that's all I've got.
You know, ultimately, we, you know, we enjoy being involved in the, you know, in a PD, and we, we enjoy the partnership we have with the developers. But when it comes to, you know, getting down to the finer points, I do think that there's a lot, a limit to, you know, our opinion versus the developer's opinion. And at the end of the day, you know, I'm going to say that Mr. Howerton, he has the financial, you know, exposure on this. I trust that he's going to make a wise investment. You know, I definitely think we've voiced our concerns, but at this time, you know, I'm comfortable with where we're headed and I feel confident that, you know, through the PD process, he'll work through the finer points.
And, and do we anticipate the sidewalks, will they go all the way down to Crawford? All the way through that main entrance, or what was your?
Yes, sir. I have not engaged a civil engineer yet on the triangle that, that has frontage on Crawford Street, and I'll have the plat back before the council here soon. But what I intend to have is try to have a circle and connect to Crawford, an island, so to speak, and I'll have an engineer design that after we finish with the plat.
Yeah, and let me clarify, I want to think, this early in the process is what I'm saying. You know, we, all we're doing is zoning change right now. We can, we can always come back and revisit some of the finer points as he gets his civil drawings and things like that. That's all there is. I don't want to hold him up, I guess, is my better.
Any further discussion from council? Is there a motion?
I, I just want to make sure, if, if you're just satisfied with just lot 12 having just the open fencing and the landscaping, then I'd recommend that the motion be a move to approve the rezoning subject to the property to the planned development zoning district as submitted. Because the way the P&amp;Z worded their motion, the intent was to screen both lots 12 and And just for the record, you won't see any more plans for this development? Everything just goes before the, the P&amp;Z and staff?
Right. Okay. Mr. Shearer, do you think, the board's opinion was that we should screen that lot? Is that on the back of 13? Do you think we should, do you think that creates any undue hardship or, or anything like that?
No, I don't think so. I, I really don't. I mean, I, I think that you're on something with the two lots facing the south, but I think we're only talking about the back of the lot. I don't think we're talking about that side. Are we? Don't?
That's correct.
Just the back?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. So just that north, just that north property line along the, I think that, I think P&amp;Z felt more comfortable with that, and I think it was a good compromise between all parties.
Mr. Howerton, do you think we can make that, that work?
Yes, sir, and, and I guess I misunderstood about the zoning commission because my development standards had just mentioned lot 12, and I did not take the motion from the zoning commission to say that it was both lots. My, my, my position has been just for 12 from the beginning, and, and I'll, I'll bring it back and, and as the engineers design the layout, if, if the lots get bigger, then they get bigger, but they won't be any smaller.
I think that would be a good compromise, and, and I think it's important, we have our boards there for a reason. I think we should listen to them, and, and I think that's a good move, just for the back of lot 13 and lot 12, but not the side. I think, I think it's something we can all compromise to. So then in that way, we could just do the motion as written? Well, I'll go ahead and do it there. Mayor, I move to approve the rezoning of the subject property to the planned development zoning district with the requirement for additional landscaping and screening standards for double-fronted lots.
Second?
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Hender and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 4C, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on ordinance adopting the City of Denton's budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021 and ending on September 30th, 2022, and appropriating the funds for the various funds and purposes of such verb, budget. Ms. Wagner, where are you?
I am on the line.
You're on the line.
Give us a second, we will have her smiling face here in just a moment.
Okay.
Nope. Oh, she'll just have her slide, okay.
We'll, we'll hear her smiling face.
Okay. Well, then we're going to listen to your voice.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. And we're here. This, this is the last step or one of the last steps. The Truth and Taxation Rules and Local Government Code mandate a governmental unit publish the proposed operating budget. And as you're fully aware, the staff has been participating in ongoing meetings since February of this year, including a workshop we held with council on June 25th of this year with council and staff. Presentations have been made at council meetings in the months of July and August as well, and the proposed budget has been posted on the City of Denton website and available in the city clerk's office since August 6th of this year. The proposed budget is updated with any changes that have occurred over the course of the budget process, and the interim city manager met with all the divisions and identified priorities and made recommendations based on those priorities. The public hearing and adoption of the budget is set for this evening, September 7th, 2021, at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of Denton City Hall. But real quickly, I want to go over the final numbers with you. We have operating budgets. First one is the general operating fund. First one is the general operating fund. And as you can see there, I don't believe anything has changed as far as days of reserve. We anticipate ending this year with 68 days of reserve and ending next year with 68 days of reserve, giving you a balanced budget in the general operating fund. In the utility operating fund, same here, we anticipate ending this year at 66 days, and council is fully aware this, a lot of this has to do with the winter storm event that occurred in February that we did not anticipate. But we do plan on ending next year, fiscal year '22, at 70 days, and both of these, the general fund and the utility operating funds, these are ending at days higher than our minimum of 60 days. And we also have restricted funds, which you're fully aware of, that only particular projects or equipment can be purchased out of these restricted funds, this is where our D3 comes from, our expenses for that, our expenses for street improvements, which we're working on, many street improvements this fall. I will give you a little more detail as to what's in the operating budgets and in the restricted funds. This budget that we're presenting to council tonight provides for funding mechanisms for a new fire engine, a new residential trash truck, as well as a commercial trash truck, major street construction projects such as Loy Lake Road, and a mill and overlay project this fall that encompasses 1.8 center lane miles, and we continue our D3 project downtown. Other street and utility projects that are funded for this next year include 700 East Bullock, 700 East Hall, and 1100 through 1400 blocks of South Seventh Avenue. We've also set aside funds to purchase equipment for both public safety and public works in order to provide more efficient operations, such as generators for most facilities, including our Part 9 water tower. Funds set aside for several water sewer projects such as Duck Creek Interceptor, Grayson Water Tower, and many other system improvements. The city is adding an additional street crew, which is a staffing of three, an additional utilities crew, which is a staffing of three, two new police officers, a property and evidence technician, and an additional social media person. Our current city manager would like to see that shared between the public safety divisions and our communication engagement divisions. A sanitation crew member, a lab technician, and additional part-time help in both parks and cemeteries. And we also have playground equipment that will be added to parks, as well as additional parking at THF. Staff recommends holding the public hearing and funding the projects and program enhancements identified in the budget, and approving the budget and ordinance as presented.
Questions for Ms. Wagner? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council?
Thanks to Renee and her team for all their work to get this done.
Certainly.
Thank you, it was a team effort from all staff, and it, and we're there.
And we certainly also should thank Mr. Attaberry for all of his work in, in helping pull together this budget, so, thank you, Bobby. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of $1,771,666... I said that correctly, I apologize.
One billion.
One billion, 771,666,236, levying the ad valorem taxes of the City of Denton, Texas, on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Denton for the year 2021, in the amount of 0.652034, for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes.
I think you read for item.
Great, so not only that, but track the whole thing. Did I flip too early?
That's, that's what's on the C.
Yep, you're a little bit early.
Okay. No? That is 4C, isn't it? That is 4C.
4C? No, you read, you read 4D.
It should have been 4D in our packets, it's 4C. Like, the wording for 4D is on our 4C.
Oh. Okay, so where's the wording for 4C then?
4D.
The, the little sentence.
I move to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget.
Yeah. There we are. I second that.
Wow. So there is the wording.
Okay. Okay, so hold on here.
Yeah, I'll be working off a paper copy here.
So, so hold on here. What, um...
I got, I got, I got.
What I read was, was 4C.
Which is what I read.
No, you read 4D.
D.
So, what are we voting on?
We're voting on 4C, and he's got a computer that's gonna tell us the right...
Yeah, I'm gonna read it.
He'll tell us the right wording.
I'm gonna read it off a more updated than the hard copy I have in front of me.
He's also gonna do the next one, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all over it. All right, so, for item 4C, I make the motion. I move to approve the ordinance adopting the City of Denton budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2021, and ending on September 30th, 2022, and appropriating the funds for the various funds and purposes of such budget.
Second.
Okay. There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Councilmember Doty, and this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Wallington?
All right, as I call your name, please say yes or no. Mayor Pro Tim Hender?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Courtrite is absent. Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilmember Doty?
Yes.
Councilmember Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spiegel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Item 4D, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on an ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Reviews of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of $1,771,666,236, levying the ad valorem taxes of the City of Denton on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Denton for the year 2021, in the amount of point, 0.652034, for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes. Ms. Wagner?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. The proposed, or the budget that you actually just approved has general fund revenues in excess of $30 million, $34 million, which is supported in part by a proposed tax rate of .652034. This rate of .652034 is the same rate as 2019 and 2020 tax rates. It is higher than the known new revenue rate for 2021 that is set at .647037, but is lower than the voter approval rate set for 2021 of .745384. As the mayor stated, the Grayson Appraisal District did assess property value for 2021 at $1,771,666,236, and that's this year's adjusted tax base. This adoption of the tax rate is necessary to support the budget. And staff recommends holding the public hearing and adopting the ordinance on the tax rate.
Questions from council for Ms. Wagner? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council? A motion?
Mayor? I move to adopt the ordinance approving the assessment role as certified by the Board of Review of the Grayson Appraisal District in the amount of $1,771,666,236, levying the ad valorem taxes of the City of Denton, Texas, on all property, both personal and real, in the City of Denton for the year 2021, in the amount of 0.652034, for each $100 of assessed valuation, and providing for the apportionment of such ad valorem taxes.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Hender. This requires a roll call vote. Ms., Ms. Wallington?
Okay, as I call your name, please say yes or no. Mayor Pro Tim Hender?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Courtrite is absent. Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilmember Doty?
Yes.
Councilmember Crowley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spiegel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on the proposed Denton Development Alliance fiscal year 2022 budget. Mr. Kai? Well, no, actually, it says Ms. Wagner, so I guess she's gonna introduce you, Mr. Kai. So, Ms. Wagner, you're on again.
Okay. The Denton Development Alliance Board of Directors met and approved the presented budget for fiscal year '22 on August 19th. DDA President and Certified Economic Developer Tony Kai will present their draft budget to the council this evening for approval. DDA is funded annually through 4A sales tax interest and lease income and carryover funds from the same sources. And so, here's Mr. Kai.
Thank you.
Now, now, Tony, we've been throwing around big dollars up here, so, you know, just fall right off.
We're gonna bring it down a notch.
Okay.
Mayor and council, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of the DDA Board to present to you our budget, our draft budget, and to answer any questions you may have about that budget. I want to start by saying we've had a pretty decent year in Denton. We've had some really significant projects, notably, we have acquired the John Mansville property, we acquired a $500,000 matching grant, Victron is under construction, the old AT&amp;T site for their maintenance was purchased, and there'll be a QT built on that, and then hopefully, if things go right, we'll have a Chick-fil-A right down the street from that. So we've got a lot of good things going on, this was a great year, took a lot of work by all the team, and I would say this about the coming year, based on everything that we're working on, and most of you know what we're working on, if everything happens that we're currently working on, next year is going to significantly change the future of this city in a very positive way, and it's a position that we've been getting closer and closer every year, but this year and next year, depending on what happens in the national economy, is gonna be a real significant change in who Denton is and what we're gonna be in the future. This is my 21st proposal, our budget proposal. We have a format, which I think most of you are familiar with, maybe not Reverend Thorne, but every budget item from the previous year is listed with the cost that we budgeted from this fiscal year, and then to the, to the right of that is a line item of the same budget item and what we're forecasting for this coming fiscal year. Every item that we have on our budget, there's a corresponding description of that in our budget. So most of the items are very simple, explanatory, and, but there are a few I just want to touch base with, with you on. First of all, on the EDA grant, we put in as income $500,000, and then I'll show you the line item where we're gonna spend that in the back, so that should be a wash. All the rest are very simple, increase in some pricing, pricing from accounting services and other services, and on salaries, we did not know exactly what the city was gonna do until today, so we just plugged in like a 2%, but it's the board's request, I suppose, from DDA Board that we match what the city does, so we'll need to go back in and make some small adjustments on that salary. On the second page, or my second page, workforce development, there's $77,000 versus $16,004 from last year. That major increase is because the DDA Board approved a two, two-year matching grant with SEDCO, Sherman Economic Development Corporation, and Workforce Texoma to hire two outreach specialists, specialists for career counseling, and one will be focused on, mainly on Denton, mainly on promoting the advanced manufacturing program and our healthcare program for career, and then she'll also be working with some other schools, and then the other, the other outreach specialist will be mainly working in Sherman and some of the other rural schools. So that's a two-year commitment that we've made, so we're, we're gonna pay that, pay that upfront with Janie and keep going. So on the property management expenses, you see, last year we had a $30,000 budget item, this year it's 530, that's where we're taking the $500,000 grant to wa, to a washout, really. Then John Mansville taxes, we're showing they're gonna have $15,000 in taxes on that to be paid. Actually, John Mansville paid that tax bill, but we got it in this fiscal year, so we've already accounted for it, so we have, we'll have to pay that tax out of this year, after this coming year, but it's a wash. Fire suppression incentive, we added 50,000 to that, we have several projects on Main Street that we think are gonna, are gonna want, and we want them to take advantage of that and put sprinkler systems in. We have a micro manufacturing incentive program that we launched this year, we did two of those, so we're, we're gonna budget 100,000 for that. And then the other incentives are listed there, new urban development, that's Chick-fil-A that we approved some time ago. The others are two projects, Project Double and Project Global, that we've made basically a verbal commitment to, we have not actually approved their contract yet. And on below that, we have John Mansville property purchase. Last year, we thought we were gonna pay for the John Mansville property, but actually, it was donated, so it was zero. The board and all of us are still trying to determine what our approach is gonna be on the cleanup of the John Mansville property. We have a pretty scheduled process that we're going through now to determine the actual final bid cost, but it's gonna be somewhere between five and six million, so we have to decide are we going to borrow that money, take care of it, or somehow string it out over a couple of years. That's still to be determined, so I did not put anything in there for that. So that's about, that's a quick summary of that, and then on our marketing budget, really the only add-on there is on recruitment missions. We have a call center that's vacant right now, so we've hired two different third-party consultants that are setting up calls, in fact, we have one tomorrow for call center back office prospects. And the retail market analysis, we actually started that this year, I think we've already paid 15 on that, and so the, the rest of that will be due and the reports are done, which will be this coming year. And then we're going to take a hard look at our website and upgrade and update that, that's 25,000. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Kai?
Chad, well done. Good luck, Tony.
Well, on behalf of the DDA Board and the staff, and it's a privilege, and we thank you for the privilege of working for you, for the team, the management team that we have at the city, and for all the citizens in this community, it's, it is a privilege. Thank you so much for that.
Well, Tony, it's been a long 21 years, but I bet it's never been as exciting as it is right now, huh? Discussion from council?
Don't hang on, Ms. Fort, do we need to add a change for them to follow the fiscal year '22 employee pay plan, so they can adjust those pays on their budget?
No, it was presented with a...
It can be as presented.
It's an addendum on there.
Perfect. Now, I have nothing.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the Denton Development Alliance fiscal year 22, 2022 budget as presented.
Second.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Hender and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Kai. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2022 budget. Ms. Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Last, but certainly not least, if the city's adopting a budget that requires more property tax revenue than last year, council must also vote separately to ratify this tax increase that's reflected in the budget. Staff recommends approval and asks that you approve this tax increase in the budget.
Questions for Mr., Ms. Wagner? Discussion from council? A motion?
Councilmember Spiegel, if you want to read the motion, it's on 4D.
I see that.
And it will get you there, sir.
Didn't know we'd swap 5 and 4s. Didn't know we'd swap fives and fours. Mayor, I'll make a motion. I move to ratify the tax increase reflected in the budget.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Spiegel and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Hender. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, no, 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 you can't say aye because it requires a roll call vote.
It does. All right. As I say your name, please say yes or no. Mayor Pro Tim Hender?
Yes.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Courtrite is absent. Councilmember Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Councilmember Doty?
Yes.
Councilmember Crawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spiegel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Well, thank you all very much. There being no need for an executive session this morning, this morning, this evening, and no further business to come before this body. The time is 7:10, and we stand adjourned.